Yes.
We're gonna start at 6:32 in another minute. I'm gonna give Commissioner Johnson the opportunity to, I know he works late sometimes, and we did not hear from Commissioner Maddox, but I do know that Commissioner Huggins won't be in attendance. So we have a quorum, we're fine. We're just gonna give others the opportunity to come on in, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. John is no longer here?
It's just me.
Just you, okay. Hey, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna open the meeting now at 6:32, okay? Will everyone?
Okay, we're recording.
Okay, thank you. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we will open up the July 18th, 2023 Seadrwaugh Plan and Commission Meeting at 6:32 PM, and we will have a roll call. Commissioner Freiberger, present. Commissioner Cock, virtually, present. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Fournette, present. Commissioner Maddox, absent. Commissioner Fatizi, present, and Commissioner Huggins, absent. So with that all being out of the way, has everyone had the ability to take a look at the May 16th, 2023 meeting minutes?
Yes.
Any comments? I don't have any myself, by the way.
No comments?
No comments.
They're very well done.
Yeah, no comments from me.
Thank you.
So with that, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 16th, 2023?
Aye, so move?
I have a first from Commissioner Freiberger and a second from Commissioner Cock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I'm sorry, any further discussion? Nope. Motion carries. No amendments for the first time in a while. So moving on to the general public comments section. So prior to opening the general public comments section, if anybody wishes to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of all scheduled monthly Plan and Commission meetings and read into the record at that time. So do we have anyone that has submitted any written?
We have not.
We have not. So at this time, I will open up the open public comments section at 6:34 PM. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? So, so if you would, before you speak, please state your name, or address, or any organization, or group that you represent. Welcome.
Hi, Philip Murray, 101 West Woodworth, Seadrwaugh. I'm here today to see if you can change the rules a little bit on your zoning of square footage. The second bit was that the addition over there. My friend Paul here, he has property over there that's, the front of it is 90 feet wide and by 120. His house sits on one and a half lots. He wants to be able to build on the other one and a half lots, but it doesn't meet the 6,000 square foot. And it's a, it doesn't make sense that he couldn't do it because there's other lots grandballed in that are 30 feet wide built on, and then there's some that are 45 feet, and there's some that 10 feet have been taken off of them. It should just be grandballed in where he could do this. So he could sell it and someone else can build there instead of building accessory dwelling, which, accessory dwelling, you're a landlord then, and you have to live in one of them. And that's not what he wants. He just wants to be able to sell it and build, someone build on it. It's over there on, what's that called? Haynes, Haynes Street.
Yeah, Haynes.
Yeah. And I was told it has to be 6,000 square feet, but he's been helping looking into it, nursing that it should be grandballed in.
Okay. We can only listen. I have a whole bunch of things I can say to that, but at this particular point, we're just taking notes of what's here, and we can discuss it later on, so.
But we know that it's out there to be looked at. I think you're gonna do the parklets. That will be, I'll be able to come up and speak about those later.
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't know, is there anything you wanted to add, Paul?
No, except I'm really getting tired of being able to have it load.
Anyway, it'd be nice if you could look into it in a little deeper and get some answers somehow.
So, let me ask you this. You just referred to another, we don't have any public meetings tonight? So, what did you just mention? I'm sorry, I missed that.
The parklet, the cage area for the restaurants and stuff?
Oh, that's coming up, the streeteries, okay, yeah, yeah. But we don't have an open public meeting on that schedule tonight? So listen to what we go through, okay? And then when we put it up for a public meeting, then you'll be able to make as long a comment as you would like. But that's not tonight.
A hearing.
A hearing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 thank you.
The city council's been doing stuff, gets up there and they vote on it right then. And I don't know how you do it, so, yeah, they've just been voting on stuff, changing stuff, and people don't even get to know about it or even have a comment. So I didn't know how this works.
Yeah, every community is different. Typically, when something like this comes up on our agenda, it's published, right? So it'll say, "Public hearing for that particular piece that we're speaking about." And that's exactly when you would want that, you know, your opinion or whatever you have to say heard at that time. At this time, it's good that you're here because we will be discussing that, so we'll give you a lot more information the next time it does come up for discussion, for the public to comment on it.
Yeah, okay. That's it, I probably had some other things, but forgot. All right, we'll check back, check back with the city, and see if things can be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, if you'd like, you know, a lot of times it's really good to get on record if you do have something to say, even if it's simple, because the fly on the wall is never heard. So feel free to come forward, do the little introduction, and just get it on the record of what we were just talking about.
Yeah, I'm Paul Giroux, and I live over at 616 Haynes Street. It's the dead end, Haynes Street. And Phil was just discussing the property, and I've got three lots, and my home sits on one and a half. And then I've got the other 30-foot lot plus 15, or 20 maybe. I haven't measured up, but, you know, it's just, I didn't realize it was gonna be so hard for me to take care of when I bought the home, but it's gotten extremely hard to even keep the dandelions down. So I would like to sell it. My neighbor wants to buy it and do a lotline adjustment, and include it in his property. His name is Steve Hull. He lives on the corner of Haynes and Berry. So, that's pretty much it.
Okay, well, it's great to get on record, that's what's important about it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So do we have anyone online that would wish to have any general public comments? Bill, is there anyone that you have in the queue up there that we can't see?
You're seeing what I'm seeing.
Okay. So at this point, I will close the general public comments section at 6:40 PM. And thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings scheduled for tonight, we will in the future, so it's important that the both of you that had some commentary on what we're going to be discussing next are aware of those dates, then you will absolutely have the ability to get your comments on the record at that time. But tonight's just not that time, but it will be happening in the very near future. So on to unfinished business. We will start with you. Senior Planner Pro Tem?
Okay, so these are the proposed amendments to Chapter 1716 to remove, or, sorry, this is the sidewalk cafes and streeteries, correct? Yes, okay, so these are amendments to Chapter 1044, to update the sidewalk cafe regulations, and to add regulations for streeteries, and amendments to Chapter 1704 to define streeteries. So at the May meeting, we discussed that these amendments would allow for sidewalk cafes and streeteries, also known as parklets, to be allowed permanently under specific conditions. The original amendments that you saw before propose new regulations for these types of structures with regard to intended use, location, construction requirements, maintenance responsibilities, size over parking spaces, conformance with the Washington State Liquor Board policy, insurance, liability, and required permitting. So a few edits have been made to the draft amendment since you've seen them, and I'd like to discuss them here. So at the last meeting, the Planning Commission requested that I get in touch with the police and fire departments to discuss whether these regulations adequately address public safety. So those departments did make some suggestions for me to add in with, that are specific to construction, power, and heating. You'll find those under the construction sections for both, the streeteries and the sidewalk cafes. You'll see I also added no tents or tent-like structures, like you'd asked me to. The fire department also wanted to make sure that they had jurisdiction to review, approve, and inspect those structures, so they, so to that end, I added under the sections permits required, that all work performed under an issued permit shall conform to all other city codes, engineering standards, and all other standards used by the city and administration of the code. And I also added, it's a condition of approval for permits, that applicants are required to consent to inspections by any appropriate city department. I've also updated the intent section for both, to allow sidewalk cafes and streeteries not only in the central business district, but also in the UVMU. A major component of the intent of that UVMU is to present an attractive and welcoming appearance to the western entrance of the city. So I find that streeteries and sidewalk cafes will help to achieve that goal, as they help to attract pedestrian activity to the streetscape. I also wanted to have an open discussion about the use of on-street parking for streeteries, because I know the public has had some concern about placing these over parking spaces, removing the ability for people to use them for accessing local businesses. So I've attempted to place bounds on the number of parking spaces streeteries are allowed to take up. So you'll see those bounds under the section titled "Size Over Parking Spaces." Maybe we restrict the number of parklets that can be installed consecutively. I don't wanna exacerbate the downtown parking concern further, but, yeah, that's everything if we wanna.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of questions, but I'm gonna start with you, Paul, so I'm gonna just go around the room and let everybody have something to say, so we'll just start one, go straight through like I typically do it, and then we'll just back and forth off each other. So go ahead.
I'm really happy, happy to see that the police and fire had suggestions, and I think they improved the regulation. So that's my major concerns were addressed. And just a quick question, would this grandfather, the existing unit, I think it's on Ferry Street, or would they have to make changes too?
They would, if they are out of compliance with these, these regulations, they would have to get a permit and bring it up to code.
So that's the Magnolia Grill, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and I feel really good about this. My major concern, sorry, I'm being attacked by a kitten. My major concern is that was safety and the fire hazard, and I think those have been adequately addressed, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Freiberger?
So... I just have a list, so I'll go down it. So, when I saw that this has now been expanded to the urban village mixed-use overlay, I think the first thing that kinda came to my mind is that that is kind of different than the downtown, as far as downtown, my thinking, and I might be incorrect, for why we were allowing streeteries and to take up public parking, is because there's limits on size for an ability for people to, maybe limited seating indoors, and so that increases that option outdoors. But in the UVMU, where presumably that's new construction, they should be able to provide adequate seating areas for their restaurants or anything like that, unless I'm missing something there. I know it's supposed to still have that kind of village downtown feel, but...
If we wanted to limit for the UVMU, for them just being sidewalk cafes instead of both the streeteries and sidewalk cafes?
That was one of my comments as well, and I'm glad you caught on to it first. There's no parking down there. You got Hodgins, it's totally narrow. There is, the only street parking I know of that's going to be there is right on Trail in Hodgins, and there's only maybe like five parking spots that BYK actually pushed back on. So on the streetery side, I don't even know why we would even have that in the UVMU. Yeah, because they're gonna be able to do stuff on their properties in general. On the sidewalk side, I think they're pretty wide to take and expand, similar to what the bullpen did on Metcalf. So I'm just looking at examples in town, and Magnolia Grill's a great example of a streetery as in, as in the public right-of-way versus just an expansion out onto the sidewalk. But just even in that UVMU zone, I was like, where are we gonna put it? And Hodgins is real tight as it is, then you have the school district looking to do things right there, you got the sports fields. There was a whole bunch of everything that went on with that. I think before you started work here, when we were going through that, yeah, it's just not a space, I don't believe that we even have the space to put something on a street.
Okay.
Commissioner Fournette? Oh, I'm sorry. Continue.
I mean, we can go around several times, it doesn't matter to me. So, and then kind of jumping back to sidewalk cafes, I noticed, as you mentioned, the language had been updated kind of in both, for both sidewalk cafes and streeteries, about the rigid structure. And the only thing that occurred to me about that is, if there's room on the sidewalk for that, and people wanted to put little umbrellas over their seating and not actually have like an actual, you kinda need, in a streetery setting, you need a rigid structure to protect from, the public from traffic, and kind of separate it off so that, you know, it's not part of the streetscape. But if it's on the sidewalk, maybe taking, removing that ability to have some of those other options, maybe, I understand not putting tents there or anything like that, but I don't know if that precludes like sun umbrellas or something like that, so. Kinda wanted to see what other commissioners thought about that.
Anything else?
Let's see. Oh, and then just a comment, the streeteries language, that is all proposed because that's a new section of the code. And so, just the language, both the red underlines, which I assume were the new additions, and then the just regular language in there is all new. So technically, it should be underlined just to show that it is new, new code language. We're aware of that, but maybe for the next meeting, if that could also be, so we can see the new updates, that would, that would be appreciated.
Okay, I was trying to show you the difference between what you saw last time and this time, but if you'd prefer it that way.
I think normally we do like red and then blue, maybe the first time to show the changes or something.
The red versus the blue is a different person making edits?
Ah, okay, okay.
I'll be red, if I did.
So honestly, just so long as it's like underlined, at least, so we know it's all new language versus, because we might miss something that can be changed because we're thinking it's already codified, maybe that's just my thought on that, but it just, and then, um... Yeah, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Fournette, you have the floor.
I had a couple of things, but I wanted to follow up on your construction thought on the sidewalk cafes. If you just wanted a simple handrail, that's not allowed? Is that what I'm gathering?
I'd consider a handrail rigid and wind resistant. I'm sorry, I'd consider a handrail rigid and wind resistant.
Oh, okay, just something that doesn't blow away.
Yeah, that was the intent, just something that's not gonna fly away in the wind and smack someone on the head.
Okay, well constructed with rigid, wind resistant materials, so it's not, okay, so that would be like a nicely built fence.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, it's pretty well spelled out on size and width and how much space you can consume. Is there anything on height?
I suppose not.
Because it dawned on me, if the heaters have to be three feet from anybody's head, and somebody's six feet tall, they gotta be a nine-foot ceiling. And a buffer for, so you got 10-foot ceilings on your, on your streeteries.
Yeah, I did put height for the barrier around streeteries, but not, good point, okay.
I don't know if it's necessary or not, but when I'm reading, heaters have to be three feet away, and they're in the overhead, you gotta have a 10-foot ceiling. Just food for thought. And when you say the sidewalk cafes need to be contiguous to the building, I can understand that because they need to be attached, but on 1044-156-D3, it says the streetery must be contiguous, and I don't think you can contiguous a streetery to the building because you have to have the sidewalk open. So if you go to streeteries 10 dot 44 dot 156, you got A, B, C, D, and then another C, which is my next topic, and then D. "Streeteries, number three, shall be installed in parking stalls that are located in front of the associated business, shall not exceed the width of the business frontage, and shall be contiguous to the building." So I think that is the same verbiage as, yeah.
Yeah, I think I maybe just copied and pasted and missed that. Okay, so I'll remove the "shall be contiguous to the building."
And then the A, B, C, D goes C, D, E, F, G, so I don't know if you're, you'll probably arrange those later once we settle down on something.
Yeah.
Good. And I think that's all I got.
You got that, Nicole? Okay, so I have a lot more than everybody else had here, and it's more from a, looking at it in a couple of different ways. You have services that can be provided on the sidewalk versus services were really, or an extension of the business, out onto the street. And I am definitely one of those people that is concerned about the amount of space that a potential service venue can take. Parking down there is tight right now, sometimes, I mean, really, really tight. And I understand, you know, when Magnolia, you know, put their service area outside, that was a response to COVID, okay? So, and I've seen it in a lot of other jurisdictions, not just ours. Bellingham's a classic example, there's a lot of people that kept, Seattle, Bellingham, I could think of several, Bothell, that kept the services out on the street, but they changed, okay? They were like, okay, well, if that's gonna happen, we have to now start setting limitations on the amount of space that you can occupy. So essentially, the city of Seadrwaugh, since that is owned by the public, okay, that is public space, that I believe that we need to, when we talk about permitting and things like that, there needs to be a rental cost associated with that. So when we get down to the permitting end, this shouldn't be just a giveaway. And here's an example, you have one business up the street, let's say Joyce Bakery. That firm has no plan on putting something out front, but now down the street, you have a competing business that now gets basically free space on the street that competes with the same type of product. See the problem here? On top of the fact, how much space are we going to give? A typical stall here, and I was just looking at the handicapped parking designation, it's eight feet by 16 feet. Typically, it goes, sometimes 10 by 20s are pretty standard for a lot of parking spaces, but the handicap had an additional five feet. So we have to take a look at that, of how much we're gonna be giving up if somebody wants it. We also have to take a look at things as well. Is it seasonal? Is it month-to-month? There's a lot of businesses that might just wanna, you know, grab it a month-to-month, still go through all the hoops and everything for the permitting, and just maybe go from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and that's good. Why would you want that facility out there, or why would we want to lose the parking for that particular time? So I'm just saying, there's a bunch of things here that, right off the bat, we need to discuss in a lot more detail. Another thing that I was taking a look at was in E, in Construction, so I wanna say Construction E, number five. "Because sidewalk cafes may sit on top of critical infrastructure and utilities such as gas lines, sewer, and/or water mains, they shall be designated for easy removal." That's what an emergency is, you don't wanna stop, have to go out there and tell somebody to start moving, "We gotta move this structure because I got a gas line leak." So there's gonna be some businesses that... So there's going to be some businesses that this might be a viable option for them, but I'm one of those people that is, that's basically fanatical about protecting that type of infrastructure for a whole host of reasons, I think. Our Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger, might want to have a comment on that as well, where I think this is a great idea, but right now in the conceptual state, we really need to think this through because the public can't have the opinion that some business is benefiting at their expense because now they can't find a parking spot and they got three kids screaming at them, okay? And there's, you know, businesses rocking away, okay? And they're like, hey, this is a giveaway. So we need to be really conscious of what we're going to do from a permitting standpoint, as well as how it's going to apply, again, is it year round? Is it short term? So these are things that I like to, you know, open up for discussion here and look at it just like as a regular business. We're renting space out, but it needs to be limited because these are essential public services when it comes to parking and, you know. I mean, think about it, I mean, even getting service onto the street. Magnolia is interesting because they're kind of off to the side. But on Metcalf, I mean, how would you actually, on a busy day like La Gorgo Rodeo? I mean, come on, I mean, you know, that, that street, you couldn't even walk a foot without tripping over anybody. So how do you accommodate something like that at that time? Right, so the month of July, do all streeteries get removed on Metcalf? We need that space. Right, I mean, that, that's for a totally separate, you know, concept at that time of the year, so that's where I'm seeing a whole bunch of problems. They're great if you're off to the side, but if you're on one of these main thoroughfares like Metcalf, which it is, okay, how do you, how do you accommodate something like this and accommodate everything that's been going on here for close to 100 years? So I will yield the floor to Commissioner Kocak. Take it.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I may have missed it. Does this allow businesses to sort of subcontract that space? What I mean by that is say they have a slow month and some food truck wants to rent their space in the eatery, is that allowed?
We don't have that in here right now, but these are, these are great details. Exactly, yeah.
That would be different, so you would be required to get a mobile vendor permit. I don't remember all the bounds for that.
What, what he's talking about is like, let's say somebody wants to, they, they already built this little structure, and now somebody's coming in and they'll, they'll let them use their kitchen or whatever, and hey, you can now use part of our kitchen. And people split kitchens all the time. It's very, very common in the commercial restaurant business. People cook offsite all the time. There's a facility in Mount Vernon that has 15 separate stations. So what would be preventing somebody from subletting that space? And that's what I'm saying, I'm looking at this more like a commercial real estate lease than anything because it is public space, okay? And public agencies lease and rent space all the time, right? But there is a binding contract, there is a lease, there, there are terms, there are base fees, there are other things that might be added into it, like common area maintenance, right? So if you're providing lighting on top of, which we kind of do anyway, you know, do you want to add that into the cost? And all I'm saying is this is a really great concept and idea, but now the devil is in the details, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of examples out there directly from the commercial world for all types of leasing, whether it's, it's land, people do it all the time, or if it's an interior. And that's what this basically is, is you're leasing out land.
So I have a couple of comments. First, a question for you, Nicole. Typically, is this a long-term right-of-way permit? Is that how that is envisioned, or are we taking a look at that too?
Originally, it was envisioned as a long-term. These would be permanent structures unless some violation happened and we had to remove them.
Yeah, that, that's typically, from what I've seen in other jurisdictions, is, is done. I do think to address Commissioner Fatizzi's point about subletting out, I understand it's public right-of-way, but if it's supposed to be related to the business that it's in front of, we could just, a simple fix would be to put language in here that says that it must be associated with the business that it's in front of, and it can't be sublet to another vendor.
Kind of like the language we used for ADUs originally, that we understand is going to need to change, like if you were going to do an ADU, you had to live onsite, so something similar to that.
Maybe under the uses section, private outdoor dining areas, just specify that it's for use of the associated business only.
So here's the thing, in the CBD, you're going to need limitations where you can't do these, and Metcalf is, is a classic example.
Yeah.
You, you won't be able to do it.
So perhaps we could, this may over limit it. In a way, I kind of was thinking it's, this arose most specifically to address the existing streetery at Magnolia, and it almost seemed to me that might be the only viable place to have one downtown, because yes, I share the concern every time I drive home in the evenings on a busy day. Farmer's Market is a great example, and there's not, you know, it, you have to go quite a ways up the street to find parking spaces, and people don't want to walk. So if there is any of the number of restaurants that we have downtown on Metcalf that wanted to do streeteries out front, that would be taking up that prime parking that's right in that area that's busiest fairly commonly, at least a couple of times a week, I would say at minimum, it's pretty full. So I'm not against the idea in general, but I, I wonder if it'd be too limiting to say it couldn't be on Metcalf and could only be on side streets, but then that would pretty much preclude the businesses fronting on Metcalf from having any. Magnolia is kind of unique because they're a corner.
Right.
In a way, and they have parking in the back too, so. They, they have, relatively speaking, seem to have plenty of parking besides the street parking, and that's not the case for most of the other restaurants.
Which is, which are all on Metcalf.
Yes.
Yeah, I get it.
They're sandwiched between other businesses, they don't have parking behind necessarily. Yeah.
That gets down to the transportability question of the actual structure, and there's different ways of doing that.
I'm thinking about State Street too. That's pretty highly traveled in that area as well. You've got, I mean, the Woolly Market's been closed now for a while, but for example, if they wanted to put a streetery out on that corner.
You know, it's a visibility thing too for traffic, big time, even, you know, where the downtown 48 is and Seidron. The way that parking goes, because I live down there, you have to stick your nose out, you know, right across from the Pioneer Marketplace, and it gets pretty tight in there sometimes. You can't see traffic coming at you, and now you have the library right across the street there, so it's a little dicey when you start putting up structures like this that can potentially go out, you know, 16 feet off of the curb. I mean, everybody's complaining about.
And there's.
Go, go ahead, Paul.
There's another consideration too. Whoever goes into the Woolly Market, and I hope somebody does soon, that will just add to the parking behind them, them and Joyce Cafe.
Yeah.
And I've been using that parking area for 20 years, and it, it, it can get pretty full, so.
Yeah.
Parking's a problem, I mean, it is, and that's come up many, many times, not just for this discussion here, but just in joint council, planning commission meeting, you know, get togethers, even the length of a lot of the latest, you know, pickup trucks, they literally are, are out past the parking spots, like literally sometimes two or three feet, and then you throw a trailer hitch on top of it, and as far as we haven't had more incidents, I'm just not aware of them.
I, I do think we can address the site thing because there's limitations on how close you can get to a corner already, so maybe it's kind of a moot point, maybe it doesn't have to be directly addressed, but we could put some language in there that specifically says, you know, it can be no closer than whatever seems to be reasonable. If it's taking up parking spaces, those parking spaces are probably only going to be so close to the cur, or the corner anyway, but, but on a through street, that's, that's a different. That's really only concern on a corner.
I could just put something in that they shall not block a vision clearance triangle, simple as that.
You had some language in here about the number of stalls that can be utilized, and, you know, not picking on Magnolia, really anybody, I mean, what would be a limitation? You know, when I look at eight feet wide by 16 feet in depth, I start getting a whole lot of square feet, including the setbacks between, you know, door openings and things like that. You know, what, what's reasonable? I mean, do we want to give somebody, you know, 20 plus square feet, 24 feet of frontage? That takes out three parking spots.
So you're saying, suggesting to limit, if they have multiple parking spots, limit it to not using all of them on their frontage?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want the whole frontage of that whole business taking up a, a streetery. I mean, you would, you'd almost double the size of your service area on the inside.
And that might help deal with the parking limitation if they can't take up all of the spaces. But again, downtown, there aren't a lot of parking spaces. It's, it's really only the businesses that have long frontages that would have possibly the ability to provide street parking as well as enough area for a streetery. I'd have to get out there and look and count parking spaces in front of.
Do we have any data from Public Works on this as far as, because the, the parking's been a big issue, and has somebody done any studies of peak times and then things like that as to when we run into issues, or I'm sure somebody's complained somewhere along the way.
I'm sure. I can ask Mark, see if he has anything.
He would know. Now, he would be a great resource on that, to get his idea as to what's actually something feasible. Right, I, I'd rather talk to the people when we start doing numbers like this, to not throw something against the wall, to actually go to the people that are dealing with, you know, not only managing it, but they also understand what the limitations are, or where we actually do have space to do different things. And there, there are going to be times a year, then, you know, we, we advertise Homolago Rodeo, that is the advertisement going up Highway 20, and no way would you be able to put, if I, I'm thinking of the number of places that would do something like this from, literally from Ferry heading all the way up towards the high school. Yeah, there, there's a lot of people that would love to do something like this, but at certain times of the year, that, that space is totally utilized. Even the wood carving section behind Woolly Market, it's packed. Yeah. Let's get some hard numbers on that. This is a great concept, and, you know, there, there's no way it's a DOA thing, I don't, I don't believe, but there, there needs to be an approach to it because of the locations of certain businesses that would like to deploy something like this. And then, you know, taking a look in, and I could actually help you out with that, of how certain, look at it like a commercial lease. I mean, if you're going to be giving up city land for a business expansion, there, there's got to be some type of fee structure based into that. I think that, that, well, that question's going to come up, not just from me, from a whole bunch of people. Anyone else would like to add to her to-do list?
Well, just a comment, and this is really something staff would know more about, but I feel like the idea of lease agreement or rentals kind of gets into a different, different purview. Planning handles this typically through permits, and, you know, you pay a one-time fee, and then you have to renew it once a year, or however the permit is set up. And so.
I look at this as a different animal than that, because it, it might not be, it might be somebody that just wants to do something month to month during the good time of the year. Why would you, you know, in the middle of the winter, even from a plowing perspective? I'm just saying, let's, let's take a look at options, not a one, because planning, you're right, because when you permit, the thing is permanent, where in this particular case, it's really not a permanent structure. It's to be moved right down to, you know, we had language in there over utilities, where, you know, unfortunately, depending on what utility is there, that, that needs to be taken a look at, you know, covering gas lines, water mains, that, that's somebody else that should be chiming in on that, saying, no, this is a bad idea here because this is our main shut-off. See, there could be a valve underneath the street there that, something blows out down the street, that that's the only way to shut it off. So that's a whole bunch of other issues coming up when it comes to that type of infrastructure. But yeah, you're right, permitting is, it would be different than, you know, and cities lease out space all the time, but yeah, that might be in a different department, I don't know, finance, I don't know, so. Let's, let's put the, with the, the square pegs in the square holes, I guess. Commissioner Fournette, you usually have some great input on this kind of stuff.
Are businesses asking for streeteries? It looks like this is more something that the staff here wanted than the establishments.
Say more businesses have asked about sidewalk cafes than the streeteries. I think most people kind of share the sentiment that the downtown parking is an issue, so.
Okay, and have we experimented with streeteries on Metcalf?
Not on Metcalf. To my knowledge, the only one we've got is Magnolia.
Okay, and have there been any complaints on the Magnolia streetery?
There have been, aesthetical, they don't like the look of it. The taking up of parking spaces. Some people have concern about how close it is to the stop sign. That's, those are the three main ones.
Okay. So it sounds like we could be opening a can of worms for no, no apparent reason.
The other, the other issue too was that it was permitted temporarily under the COVID restriction, temporary permit, and was never removed when the COVID restrictions were lifted, so that was noted as well.
Well, would you want to remove it after you, basically, here you go? Yeah, that's my point.
Right, so.
History's important, as we're going to find out in just a little while.
The more we talk about it, honestly, the more I'm feeling like maybe sidewalk cafes is the way to go and just keep it that way.
And there's a difference, yeah. The sidewalk cafes are different than, than something in the street. That, that, that was the first thing I noticed, yeah.
Sounds like the work-live episode where we talked about it for three months and begged it.
Is there anything else to add at this particular point? You have a couple of things you need to look at and some people you need to talk to, I believe.
So I did want to make a comment, so I, I do know the city of Mount Vernon handles these, at least sidewalk cafes, long-term right-of-way, that's, that's also how La Connor handled that during COVID. I don't know since, since COVID, but Mount Vernon has also let them continue through that, but it's a little bit different situation where they have a waterfront and there's public area that is not on the street, that is kind of a plaza that restaurants can kind of overflow into. And so it's just a, kind of a different situation, there's more room. And room makes all the difference. I haven't been to Anna Cortis in a while, but I do remember last time I was there and was paying attention downtown, I think COVID was still kind of going on or kind of petering out, and they had the, down, on the main drag there, is it commercial? They, they had the, the restaurants, and they definitely had some area out in the parking. It would be interesting, did staff have a chance to look and see what other jurisdictions, how they handled that since COVID ended? I don't recall if we request, requested that last time.
I don't believe it was requested, but I did look at Bellingham's and Mount Vernon's code. One of his guidelines for this one. Bellingham's was very restrictive, they were pretty bullet point by bullet point, you need to have this, that, and the other in order to get this.
How do they charge it? Because my, my son works at the Black Sheep, it's a Mexican place, and I, I called him right before the meeting, and he was working to see if they're paying the city something, not a permit, but maybe an annual or whatever fee, what their fee structure was.
I believe it's an annual renewal, I can't recall off the top of my head, but.
But there is some kind of fee structure, I guess what it is, if you're going to use public space, I believe, you know, you should be paying for the right to use it, I mean.
Yeah, can't recall what the number was, but I believe it's an annual renewal permit. type thing, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. I'm sorry, new business, possible amendments to Chapter 17 dot 16 SWMC to remove statement in intent section restricting R-15 zoning designations. So take it off. And Mr. Hayden, are you here? This was a trip down memory lane for me, that looking at the past and how it rolled through to the present. So why don't we just let it? Absolutely. There should be a little button there.
Blue button.
Welcome, by the way. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Yeah.
I'm going to refer to something I, I wrote, just, I don't know if it's pride of authorship, because I, I used a pen name for it. My own name. It was written about four years ago.
Thank you.
I was city attorney for about 12 years, and that included the time from 2000 to 2006, as I recall, when the city was facing a period of intense residential growth. It was during this time that the houses above the golf course were constructed. Also, initial developments, developments that Mike Phone had done out on Cook Road, the flip side of those all the way to, let's see, I think it's FNS Grade Road were implemented.
Sure.
And then a number of other multifamily housing came in, including the multifamily housing behind the Forest Service building, across from the junior high, and some other locations. The planner, we had left in the middle of this, all of this. We also had growth management disputes going on with the county. The planner was, the planning tech was Lacy Lar, who became the planner, and, and did a very good job, I think. But we were tasked with writing a new comp plan and zoning code without any money. The city was not prepared for the level of development and the type of conflict we had with developers who resisted paying impact fees. They wanted to cram as many houses as they could into space. The most interesting one to me would be the houses that are, one of those developments between FNS Grade Road and Cook Road on the north side, the north half of that.
Clinger Estates.
Yeah, that's, it has a number of like eight plexes. They must have 94 houses crammed into.
You know, what's interesting, when we have discussions, when we were doing our PRD, we always look back at things that did not work.
And that was...
And we incorporated, that was like a bit of a poster child, by the way.
You fight, you fight the pre, you plan for the last war.
Yeah.
And, and so a couple of things happened. One is the city council rewrote the PUD ordinance, so that it didn't matter how much extra open space you gave, you didn't get a bonus density. And the other thing is that we wrote a fairly restrictive ordinance on multifamily, because we were getting pressured by requests for multifamily housing, and we didn't have the infrastructure. We had sewer plant problems. So Lacy and I figured, what the heck? And we, in the intent section, we said, this is it. You know, don't come back and ask for an exception rezone for your particular piece of property, because the city doesn't want to give it. And this was the council's position and the mayor's position. However, this is in the intent section, and it really isn't a governing ordinance in a way. It doesn't govern a metric. And also, it's been violated several times. It's been honored in the breach, because when I look at your current map of, of multifamily zoning, I believe it includes spaces that, zones that did not exist when this was written. The, so it was really an effort to plant a seed for the next planning commission and city council, and the next city planner, and the next city attorney, all of which occurred, so that they would look twice at more multifamily housing. We had requests for this in the middle of town, basically. But I don't think it has a legal value, and I'd like to give you, I'd support a recommendation to repeal it, but I would also support a recommendation to replace it. So if I could just talk for just a minute.
You have the floor, as long as you need.
I won't be long. One of the things that Cedro Woolley valued and had when I was in high school, and later during this period, is we had very few rentals compared to Burlington or Mount Vernon. Burlington had let a bunch of rentals go in right downtown, just west of Fairhaven, for example, they had a lot of problems with. And then there were some around the corner, if you went under, under the freeway. And Mount Vernon had all kinds of apartments that they let go in up on division. Cedro Woolley had no multifamily when I went to high school. It had, across from the library, about six units, and there was a downtown building owned by Mr. Rodosovich down on Nelson, I think it was. But by and large, we didn't have multifamily. And the reason is, all the homes in Woolley were, almost all of them were owner-owned. They were occupied by owners, owner-occupied homes, because we had a plethora of jobs in the mills. Skagit Steel had 600 employees, two lumber mills each employed about 200 people. Northern State employed 200 people. Scott Paper and Georgia Pacific were going concerns, not to mention people going to Alaska and coming back with gobs of money. And you could buy a house in Woolley for $45,000. Even when I opened my office in 1980, I shopped for houses, and I found several for under $50,000 on...
Not today.
So we thought this would be the Cedro Woolley of the future. And in fact, it's not. We were required to have multifamily housing. We did. And you've had more since then, even in areas not originally zoned for that, and even in areas still not zoned for that. And this housing really does not respond to Cedro Woolley residents, or even Skagit County's need for housing. You're a bedroom community. We are, I live here, a bedroom community, not just for Mount Vernon and Whidby Island Naval Air Station, but Bellingham and Everett. Boeing was Skagit County's largest employer. We got a lot of, when I was city attorney and planner for a while, after Lacy quit, we had people in the Navy Basin, Whidby Island, coming over here because housing was cheaper.
Still are.
And so we're, we were fighting this trend, and I think we failed essentially. I don't see a way out of it. Whatever you build for multifamilies, such as those apartments built by Janiki Construction, or whatever the name is, out by, behind McDonald's, they're going for $2,400 a month for studio apartments for people that drive to Bellingham. So you have a market that is different. And also, it is very difficult to have someone who works 40 hours a week at a moderate job. And moderate, it's 30, $50,000 in my book. Not, you're not poor at 50,000, but you cannot afford to buy a house in Cedro Woolley on Ferry Street, for example. Housing prices here, for a brief moment, were up in the $600,000 range at the very upper end. I think now there's still houses between 300 and $500,000. If you look carefully, you'll find them at both ends of that. Probably won't find very many nice houses for under 300,000. And so, and that is not the Cedro Woolley market that is getting us there. It's the, it's a statewide or I-5 market that we are feeding. What I would propose, there are two other points. This is a problem that can't be solved by zoning anymore. We thought it could be, we tried. But the housing crisis is not a zoning problem. It's really a problem with interest rates, and we're becoming a two-class society, among other things. We're very rich people, and we have people that work really hard, 40 hours a week, two incomes, who can't afford to buy a house. When I got out of high school, you could walk across the street to the lumber mills, and you could get a job, buy a house, have a pension, have a full medical plan for your family, have paid vacation, and a retirement, right out of high school. Those days are gone. So what I would propose you do is encourage the city to look at your comp plan from an affordable housing point of view. And, and affordable housing really is a difficult problem to solve. You know, five Habitat for Humanity homes are not going to fix your problem. It may not be fixable just in Cedro Woolley, but it is an important problem to work on. I would recommend that you replace this with something that is real, and that is that it, and you might want to move this to the comp plan, or you might want to leave it in the intent section. But the purpose of multifamily housing is to provide in, housing for seniors or people in transition. But it is not a substitute for owner-occupied homes, and that the city needs to encourage through some means, probably more than one means, our, our original culture of owner-occupied homes in Woolley. And I, I don't have a solution to fixing it, or it would be fixed all over the country. But I do think that you should replace this, because it is meaningless. It's an intent statement, and it is not of legal worth, and it's been violated, you know, many times. But a phrase, something like, multifamily, R-15 housing, is not intended to replace single-family residences, and particularly not intended to replace affordable owner-occupied single-family residents. It's simply an intent statement, but that's what we were trying to do. Last, and, and again, I don't think it has any legal significance, and you, the city has, has not honored it, and probably shouldn't have honored it in some cases. I gave you an article I wrote under a pen name for the City Scene Magazine, and it was, it's about Green Street Boulevard, which was built in 1948, and, or at least the plot was recorded, I think, in 1948. And it was, at the time, as Mary Lou Hohenstein told me, it was where everybody wanted to live. These were very nice, modest homes. They weren't huge. They were, you know, 12, 1500 square feet. They're not giant houses. They're one-story. They have hardwood floors, wood siding. They were contemporary design. They had really nice kitchens. I've been in several of them. They were affordable for people with families. My uncle was a brand-new employee at the Department of Natural Resources as a forester in the 50s, and he managed to buy one of these with his two ki, wife and two kids. But this, this article states my feeling about owner-occupied homes. It gives us, it made this town unique to some extent, up until probably the 1980s, when the timber industry collapsed. So, so in summary, I, I think that sentence was well-meaning. It was amateurish. We had no funding. We were doing our best, working at night and weekends, to do a comp plan and a zoning code in two weeks.
That's an impossible task right there. I mean, we, we spend better part of a year, if not longer.
You have, you have till, till June of 2005 for the current one, and you're already behind. We had two weeks. And, and, and we got it passed, and, and we wrote a critical area ordinance. We wrote, we got that passed a year ahead of time. We, we did a good job, I think, but it was amateurish, cheap, and quick and dirty. So I would recommend, I take this home rated in your leisure, but I would recommend you take that sentence out. I have no pride of authorship in that at all.
Okay.
But I do recommend you replace it with something that says, these, this zoning is not intended to surrender our character of single-family owner-occupied affordable homes, because that's what we really meant. And I think that's a sentiment that most people in town would support. And, any questions?
No. You know, we, we have this discussion all the time, and the problem that, well, the challenge, I hate that word, problem. I just, I just, let's just call it a challenge. The state of Washington with the Growth Management Act, kind of man, well, they mandate the density that we need to take over the next 20 or so years, and we have to accommodate all of it. I mean, from sanitation to roads, all the different elements that you have in a comp plan. So we've looked around at other jurisdictions, even up to the Canadian Board of Burnaby, you know, Vancouver. We've, when we did UVMU, we went down to Bothell, and, you know, just to see what other jurisdictions that actually had money, okay, and what they put together, not only looking through their code, their design guidelines, and everything you could possibly imagine. And that's how we came up with UVMU, where...
As you...
Urban Village Mixed Use.
Okay.
So we got pushed back on parking, because it's an urban village. Well, yeah, we live in the middle of nowhere out here, so you still need a car, okay? So excuse me. But anyway, when you look at that building that the RJ group did, it's looking nice. I, you know, I get the, the pricing, and the market's going to bear the pricing, because Bellingham is slamming in apartments. So that's going to adjust somewhere along the line. You're just not going to have people paying 2,400 bucks for a studio. So we'll see where all that stuff goes. But from, from what we're charged to do, and having to handle the density, trying to keep as much open space as we can, and preserve our single, I live on James Hill, I get it. I'm only about 1,200 square feet, but I got a basement, so I can double it, and I'm on barely about 5,200 square feet. I'm fine. I don't need any more space than that. But I get it, and it is very important to this community that we have that, just that overall feel of everything. So having to accommodate two masters, so to speak, where the state of Washington, I mean, we had our accessory dwelling unit code, that a bunch of it is now being overruled by the state. You're taking the problems of King County and Seattle in particular, and you're transporting it all over the state. That has absolutely nothing to do with these jurisdictions or their problems.
Before coming here, I read the, it's, I think, House Bill 1110, which is the one that mandates that Mount Vernon, but I don't think it covers Cedro Woolley. I don't think we're big in...
Goes by populations a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, and we're not in, we're not covered by that, I don't think. But Mount Vernon is, they are required to basically allow, simplifying, but four plexes on single-family lots now. And they're, or they have to come up with an alternative way of meeting the density. And, and I just skimmed it, because it, I saw it didn't apply to Woolley. But it's just a matter of time before you're, you know, you're going to get an allocation from the county. The, the issue I have with the four stories and commercial underneath is, in many cases, that commercial becomes basically a glass foundation, because if you don't have the commercial rental market to fill it, you know, Burlington has graft in place.
I just saw it. It's right next to the gym I work at. Pond Fitness is right there.
There's a sign coming, there's a sign in the first floor window that says, massage coming soon. And, you know, they just have a surplus right now with the malls of retail space, you know?
It's crazy.
So you have to match your retail growth to the market, or you become the dumping ground for massage parlors and tattoo establishments. It is a difficult job. Kirkland, there's a shortage of space. At Kirkland, I'm told, has really nice retail space underneath four floors of apartments.
They do, yeah.
But Kirkland has a huge demand for retail space. And, and you just don't want the demand to exceed, the supply to, get so far ahead of the demand that you've got empty or...
You know, that's where you get into the demographics. If you look at the average salary in King County, if you actually even looked at Kirkland, I'll bet it's about $120,000.
I'd be embarrassed to tell you what I live on after retiring out of Cedro Woolley. I mean, I, honestly, I, it, it works fine for me. Everything's paid for, but I could never buy a house on my retirement salary, and I could never have afforded a single-family home bef, in, in the last 10 years of my work, given how, that I was living on a Cedro Woolley income, but I'm competing against Bellingham and Everett buyers. And, and that's the problem you have with single-family homes now in Woolley. problem you have with single-family homes now in Woolley. If you grow up here and have a Cedro Woolley job, there aren't a lot of them that will let you buy a house the way I, you know, I did back in the day, thank goodness, or my father did on the GI Bill.
You know, the jobs have changed, too. A lot of people can work out of a house. I mean, during, and COVID actually taught everybody the fact that you really don't need to be in some physical office space someplace with cameras and the technology you have these days. Yeah.
Anyway, my, my, my suggestion is take that sentence out. But just replace it with something that says you don't want R-15 zoning to replace your single-family zoning options. You want a mixture, and it needs to be limited so that you can preserve other kinds of housing, too, God willing.
So you'll, you'll appreciate this. The other rezone request was to actually, single-family, just with a little bit higher density, from five units per acre to seven. And it, it works. I mean, in this particular spot, we didn't have a problem with that. So, yeah, we're all on board with this. This one R-15 was a kind of unique situation. It was like right next to a church and right next to another R-15 property. And, and the number of units you can get in here is maybe eight apartments. And the gentleman that would like to go forward with that project was looking for something for people with disabilities, disabled veterans. That was his sell and pitch to us. But that, that was his, his intent for it.
You have the ability to do, if you, if you treat these as bonus houses, I mean, treat this as increased density, can you have a bonus housing program where we'll give you three extra houses if you'll put one of them into permanent low income or affordable income, or one of them into a veterans program or something like that?
They can do that at the legislative end. We're just the advisory group, because a lot of communities do that. Shoreline does that, right by the RTA. The new light rail stations, they mandate 20% in particular zones have to be, not optional, they have to be affordable housing, based upon the calculation in that jurisdiction.
I, I've talked too much?
No, you're great. Thank you so much.
No, I'm leaving now.
Thank you, Pat.
Diet Farm?
That's okay. We might see you there later on.
Maybe not.
So with that discussion, Paul, since I'm going around the room. Paul, would you like to comment on that?
Oh, we're talking to the guy on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Did you want to comment on that?
So basically, it's non-binding according to when that was put in for the intent. And so, yeah, I'm just going around the room like I typically do.
I, I like the, the idea, looking into what Mr. Hayden said about the bonus housing program. Because in addition to the high rates of, of mortgages, there's been a lot of people in this community, because I, I meet with them and talk to them, who, who were really hurt hard by COVID. And many of them haven't recovered. And, and I have relatives who are young people, and they want to buy houses and they can't. So looking for something like that would be of interest to me. I think another issue that was mentioned was the interest rates. Until those come down, you know, I own my house at a, I refinanced during COVID, and I'm not going anywhere. You know, why would most people? So, so the amount of available housing is kind of further restricted. So the idea of a bonus housing program to especially help people with low income, with families, disabilities, veterans, I'd love to see something like that. That's my only comment.
On to you.
Well.
Commissioner Freiburger filed out. You have a name?
Let me get down to the problematic sentence here. Okay, so.
I like that, the problematic sentence.
Oh, except I need to look and see what staff recommended. Okay, so we're just discussing it this time. So I think that, yeah, either removing that sentence would be simplest or, or replacing it, as, as Mr. Hayden said, with, you know, something that still is a nod to our, the historic, you know, focus, I guess, on single-family. But as has already been pointed out, the market trends are going in a multifamily direction, and there's no, no changing that. And so, I mean, it's a statement of intent. So you can have your ideals in there whether or not they really pan out in reality, I guess. So I, I'd be fine with it either way. I didn't really have a proposal for replacing it. I, so, with anything. So I can't really speak to, to that.
I have one suggestion. Instead of saying, no new areas shall be designated R-15, how about we shall limit, severely limit them to certain circumstances? Because we, we can't just be handing out R-15s all day.
So here's the way I'm looking at it. If we just remove it, okay, this is a rezone. So in essence, anyone else looking to do that in the future, we just don't need to do it. This is, this is a situational proposal where what they're looking to do there and exactly what's next to it is actually similar to the neighbor right across the street. And I didn't see the impact of what they were looking to do as anything major. So since the fact that it doesn't have any teeth in it anyway, because it was an intent, let's just strip that out. But I, because this is only the second rezone we've had in, what, three years, four years. We only have the golf course. I want to say this is the only third rezone I've worked on in a long time. So it's all situational anyway. We just wanted clarification because I think we were going to move forward to recommend that they do it. But we were like, hey, hang on a second. So.
I like the idea of including what Pat was suggesting in the comp plan.
Absolutely. And that is the place for it. Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was my next suggestion.
Make this simple.
Yeah. And then put.
Move it, and then we'll address the single family.
That's the place to put it. Absolutely. That has more teeth, because that's filed with the state.
And I see no reason to belabor the point here when there's a simple solution, and then we can get them back in for a hearing.
Right.
And move that. Since we're, it doesn't seem that we're opposed to that proposal.
We asked the question, too, and we, I think we got the, the, the correct answer, too. I mean, literally from the person that wrote it.
Yeah, that was a good lesson.
That was just, yeah, that was great. It's important to understand the history. That's why, you know, I sit back sometimes and, when Commissioner Huggins, he's been around for a long time. So like, he's the planning commission historian. So, but to actually have the city attorney planner that wrote a comp plan in two weeks, that's like, that's like superhuman in this day and age. Takes us a month to even strike out one sentence.
I don't know if what he was suggesting replacing it with is, is something that can hold any water. You can't say, well, we want you to own this place, not rent it out. What?
You can't, no.
No. And so I, I don't know how that could even be in the comp plan. But it seems to me, the trend nowadays, as soon as there's affordable housing, some corporation buys it all up and rents it out anyway. And nobody can get it. They can't compete with the big corporations. And I, I've actually looked through Skagit County Assessor and see that happening in Cedro Woolley. I see where a large section of certain neighborhoods are owned by one corporation.
Yeah, Cornor, Trelle, and Cook.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not hard to find. And so, no matter what we do, how do you stop that?
You know, I've seen other jurisdictions. Like I said, Light Rail's an example, that I had a property right across from the 180th Light Rail Station. And looking through their code, you can go 148 feet high. It's 14 stories, because it was right next to the Light Rail Station. But the only time you could go above 70 feet was if you had 30% affordable housing, and it was based upon 60% of the King County average. And the King County average is $105,000 a year, average. That's like, wow. I could live like a god over here for $105 grand a year. But I'm just saying, it depends on the jurisdiction, what the demographics are. And that's how that's all put on out there. You know, a lot of times, it's government grant money that's funding different things. And that's what you need to do to accommodate the housing. And, you know, it's, people are trying, not saying it's perfect, but at least it's front and center, right down to tiny homes right now. So, you know, I don't know, an 800 square foot, 1,200 square foot house isn't a tiny home to me. 800 feet is fine. That's two-story, two-bedroom apartment. So just got to figure out where you're going to store your stuff. Anyway, we would like to move on now. So let's get to that section on the, is everybody okay moving on to our Plan, Planning Commission Discussion Information Items? So what did you find out?
So the only thing I was able to look into was whether or not our code enforcement officer and previous planning director, John Coleman, had a list of unpermitted use that they were looking at. The answer is no.
Okay.
So I was hoping that Pat would have his list he was putting together.
Okay. Leave this on for, for next meeting as well.
Yeah.
This is like a work in progress kind of thing. So even Compliance didn't have a list of?
No.
They were all over the place. I could walk down a bunch, I'll point them out to you. Wow.
Yeah, yeah. I was surprised by that, too. I think they kind of took it on a case by case.
So until somebody complains, Lynn's not going to go out there and.
Laura would come to John.
Right, right.
They'd take care of it.
Right.
Problem solved. So.
That's typically how that's handled, because we, jurisdictions do not have staffing to chase down violations.
Does anyone have anything else? Paul, anything?
Madam?
Nope. Sir?
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Okay. Commissioner Frinette has a motion. I have a second from who?
I'll second that.
I second.
Do we have two seconds? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes. Meeting is closed at 7:52 PM. Thank you all. Appreciate it.